Good morning, everyone. Today is March 21st. This is the Taos County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. I call this man in to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Chairman Farrow.
Present.
Vice Chair Bagos.
Present.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lightner.
Present. Okay, we do have a forum. I ask everyone to please stand. And I'd like to recognize Pastor Luis Madrid from the Taos Assembly of God of Canor. He's going to give some spiritual words of wisdom to get our meeting up on the right track. Thank you for being here, Pastor.
Thank you, and I appreciate the honor. And also, I am honored as a member and president of the players. As a scripture, I want to just share with you real quickly in the book, the first John chapter, 5, verse 14, it says, "And if we approach God because we have this confidence that if we approach Him, believing that He gives us, He will give us." So, I know that God gives us, that we approach Him. So, if we approach Him, He will do it regularly, and He hears us. If someone asks us, we just bow and give the Lord his name. Dear Lord, gracious, every Father who come, I this morning before your presence, before your throne, were humbled, the only Father, that we were able to join together in your presence, acknowledging that you are the God, the Creator of all. And we ask you, only Father, at this time, for this condition, only Father, and pray for each one of them, God. I pray for special guidance, only Father, for your wisdom, trust in the Lord, in the heart, and we now have understanding by another way of knowledge him, and he will direct your path. So, I trust that you will direct everything that they do, that you will direct every decision that they make, and trust that we, Father, that you will guide them in every situation that they face, and that you bring them to help, uh, those situations, to give them the strength that they need to continue on as leaders of this county. Asking God for a special blessing on each and every one of them in this meeting today, knowing, only Father, that you hear us, and that's what we're coming for you. In God's name, I solemn this in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and the Holy Spirit, in the name of Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. If there are ones, please remain standing. A person that Commissioner O'Donnell got to come and give the blessing before the meeting, thank you, Pastor. Good luck with my son. You can hit him when you need. A person that gave a blessing at one of our meetings last year that Commissioner O'Donnell had invited, was actually the father of the present governor of Picores, Pueblo, passed away this last week. A person who did a lot for their community and was a active part of Taos County. Thank you all, and thank Commissioner O'Donnell for bringing it to our attention. Sheriff Humbert, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir, be my honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. As a note, our attorney Susan Baker is in a hearing at Bishop Court. We are honored to have Quayle Robinson, our other attorney, with us here today. Quayle, welcome down the bike. We'll try to be nice, keep us quiet, but you need to just get over to his other legs.
Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners? Uh, Quayle.
Mr. Chairman, did you get elected to the esteemed public place here, and what are you summonizing?
I, as a member of the multi-line pool, which is our insurance pool that runs the county insurance program through the New Mexico Association of Counties, I was recently elected to serve on the New Mexico Association of Counties Board of Directors alongside with my fellow commissioner, Gabe Romero. So, now Taos County has two members on the New Mexico Association of Counties Board of Directors. So, I'm honored to be there. He'll show me the ropes, and he'll keep me alert. Okay, congratulations.
You're welcome.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thanks for voting to be so excited with the Taos County. That multi-line pool, that's quite a board. Too shy to say it. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Commissioners?
Motion to approve. I'll second this.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting, March 21st, Taos County Board of Commissioners' meeting. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bagos.
Yes.
Chairman Farrow.
Yes.
Okay, next item is on the five awards and recognitions. First, a presentation of Taos County Employee of the Month for March 2017. This will be presented to Ms. Shannon Brumley in our legal department. I ask commissioners to move down to the front so we can get a picture with Shannon after she's willing to be seen with us. Yeah. No, it's gonna fall down here.
It's my honor to present Ms. Shannon Brumley as Employee of the Month for March 2017. To congratulate our employee of the month 2017, Ms. Shannon Brumley is our parent of legal legal system. Ms. Brumley has been in Taos County for over three years. Ms. Brumley has been, has seen countless times assisting constituents and fellow employees in any way she can. Ms. Brumley is also a key part of Taos County's elected seat. She's the Secretary of Treasury and assists with updating and hazard mitigation by the vice of criminal practice on Shannon. Excellent job she does with Taos County. You also know that, uh, she's worked well, Brumley, in the past, in the elected seat and the 911 committees, and, you know, uh, she's worked well with the sheriff as well, and many different team members for the county. She's always a good team player, and everybody has nothing but praise to say for Shannon. And she is great with constituents. If the front is open and some of the constituents comes in, she's there to greet them and also to get their issue, and she'll take messages for us. And then she makes sure that we follow up with the constituents. So, she'll tell us to follow up with them. So, she has that customer service in mind, so I wanted to mention that. A long-standing employee of the month, she does get a certificate for a few hours of administrative pay and a small gift card.
Well, not to embarrass her, but recently, in San Jose, the, uh, somebody saw the news in restaurants, it was dangerous. It was, uh, lady hit the accelerator, she was a brake, went into the restaurant with Shannon, and, and we're basically, it was a stop the car, and she hit you on the passenger lane, but we're glad that she's here with us today. She was saying, "Why don't you go pee in the air?" Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, I don't really finish.
Right. That's great.
This is a problem.
Don't touch Shannon.
It's a free policy issue.
Right.
All right. Telecommunications class number 134, the New Mexico Department of Public Safety. She graduated on February 24th, 2017. Mr. Dominic Martinez, the 911 director, would like to introduce her as his newest certified telecommunication operator.
Chairman, commissioners, Mr. Pueblo, Mr. Robinson, I just wanted to recognize Vanessa Bailey this morning. She did graduate February 24th. Did a great job. She's been with us in the county now for almost a year, and I just wanted to recognize her for all this morning. It's a HEB course that she had to go and attend, and she attended and did really well, and we're very proud of her, and wanted to recognize her for you all this morning. This is Vanessa here as well. Also, and just so everybody knows, she has also been working diligently. She is in her ninth month as well in her pregnancy and is due at the beginning of April the first, or April 1st or 2nd or so. She did go to the academy while she was pregnant, and she made it through, and now she's here now, where she's asking her whole body. Every time she sneezes, every time she sneezes, the doctor's like, "Oh, it's getting so hard." So, this is Vanessa.
Congratulations on your certification. Thank you for your dedication to Taos County and our citizens that you serve every day, and good luck in your career. Commissioners?
Thank you so much. Really appreciate you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is citizens' concerns. If any member of the audience wishes to address the commission today on an item that is not on the agenda, or you can stay for that item later, we ask that you limit your comments to less than five minutes, and we invite you to come forward at this time. Even though he's our sheriff, he has a system, but a good morning.
Hey, thank you for having me, President Regent. I'm trying to hear what Kenny Hart, after some news that I received yesterday, is supposed to change to the first immigration issue that I have personally been faced with here in Taos County. There is a man that resides here. He's resided in Taos County for over 23 years. He's brought everybody in his family, and he was 10 years old, for an opportunity for a better body. And indeed, he has made a better body for himself, missionary. He is a father to three children. He's probably in the community. Has a legal tax ID number, pays taxes, and is a standing member of this community, as is his family, his children, and his school, and he must oversee them. This person has been diligently working for the last several years, four years, with the midterm, to get his immigration status paid early. He has one case of abuse, record of 22 years living here in Taos County, in that he received his traffic citation about 10 years ago. He didn't pay it. No warrant issued for in and out of court. And yes, received all this of that, and did a pre-fish, and was allowed to him to return to take care of that matter, and gave them a word decent. He's had a renewal on that now for many years. Found out late yesterday afternoon that this person is being called into the office tomorrow, excuse me, on Thursday, the 23rd, and will be deported, and be sent back to Mexico, which is not for someone. This one gets home with me because this man is in El Paso. This is my own control office. A man that I did a background check on myself personally before I hired you, and I feel very strongly that this is wrong. Lawfully and legally, there is nothing I can do as an elected sheriff of this county beyond what I've already done, in writing a letter of support for this man, contacting the Vindran Con's office, and asking for a congressional inquiry on this matter, and several other things, talking to his immigration officer, Coffington's immigration officer supervisor, and all those in the chain with the man that I felt like might even listen to rational father vision. I'm afraid that that's all been to no avail, and I'm very disappointed in this. I do not know what further action I can take against this man. I do not feel that it's changed my position or standing in my testament to this commission before, on February 7th. I just bring this to your attention because this is probably the only person I knew that would get home with any of us. I'm very saddened by this, and if anybody has any suggestions, I contact any other immigration attorneys, and I told them, and SSE, he has worked very hard, he was doing very hard for this. Four years and some $7,000 to be suspended on his behalf to try and change his status in law, lawfully, correctly. I, I absolutely, I just wanted to share that.
Well, Sheriff, so much for our president's words that he's only going out to the bad road. So, it shows that once again, he's a very dishonest man, and he's not going to come trust me.
The system is broken, and you're not going to target the directly. This man deserves an opportunity. Quote, I owe it, and stay here with us.
Quote, I owe. I'm only going out to the bad road. The bad road. Obviously not to do with this case.
Mr. Commissioner, Commissioner, Chairman and Commissioners, if not paying a seatbelt is private, worthy of that, then maybe I'm in the wrong business.
Mr. Figueroa.
Thank you. And thank you, Sheriff, citizen of Taos County, for coming forward and sharing that with us today. It brings it to the forefront and makes us more aware as we go through our day as to what is occurring in our community. Commissioner, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, and Attorney, my name is Paul Figueroa. I'm the president of the Taos Arts Council, and I come before you today during the citizens' comments to share with you what is happening in 2017 among the arts and cultural organizations in Taos County. I have some folders here if you'd like to receive them, and, uh, thank you. Believe there's enough for everyone. The Taos Arts Council is a 501(c) nonprofit organization with a volunteer board, working to ensure that Taos County and the town of Taos has a vibrant, vital, and active arts environment. The council provides services, programs, and advocacy for all the creative arts and the entire arts community. We provide a unified voice for the arts. And for example, we coordinate and lead a Taos Arts and Cultural Consortium. This consortium began several years ago. We were in front of you last year to celebrate a major exhibition at the Harwood Museum of Art. The Taos Arts and Cultural Consortium consists of approximately 20 organizations who collaborate to market Taos tourism and enrich the lives of our residents. We identify a theme to plan and promote a variety of exhibitions, activities, and programs during the year. Consortium members share their schedules and programs for 2017 and identify several major developments. From these meetings emerged our current theme, Taos Stories and Legends, to encourage consortium members to focus upon stories, myths, legends, narratives, tales, and folklore, either with individual, family, community, or institutional subjects. In your folder is a 20-page listing of calendar events for 2017 from over 20 consortium members, identifying over 175 exhibitions, events, and activities that will enrich the lives of our residents, of Taos, to our visitors. Among the consortium's collaborative promotions in 2017 are the development of a Taos Showcase page in the magazine of Santa Fe with six cooperative ads on a page for each of their issues. The continuation of members participating in Visual Arts Source, a monthly email newsletter on the arts in Taos, sent to over 27,000 opting subscribers in the west and southwest region. And we also share this calendar information with both PR and digital media firms under contract with the town of Taos. Furthermore, the listing of calendar events occurs on a monthly basis in the Blue Trail, identifying over 20 historic and cultural sites on a single sheet visitor map distributed at the Taos Visitor Center and shared with numerous lodgers in Taos and Taos County. These efforts are augmented by our individual members through their advertising in national and regional publications. And at the end of that, and in the rear of that folder, you'll find the invitation announcement from Cal Sharp Historic Site regarding the opening of a new facility, a new attraction for tourists and for the education in our community of the Henry Joseph Sharp Studio. I appreciate the opportunity to come for you today and share with you what the consortium is doing, and very proud that we continue to lead and to work together to promote the arts in Taos County. Any questions, partners, and consortiums?
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Chairman, I'm a commissioner. Real quick, I was going to ask Mr. Figueroa, thank you for being here this morning. Our president, President Trump is proposing the cut of the arts in effect, Taos, Santa Fe, a lot of communities in New Mexico. I was thinking of proposing some sort of resolution, support to our coordination, Commissioner, I believe. What are your thoughts? How would that help?
Thank you, Commissioner Romero, for offering that, and my response is yes. Let's put together some of some Taos County to go to Santa Fe and to Washington, and to contact our representatives in Washington. This is a battle that frequently occurs in the National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for Humanities, Public Broadcasting, and, uh, as the president of the Taos Arts Council and as a leader of the consortium, I know that many of us would endorse and be supportive of such a resolution or letter that you write. Yes, it will be a significant impact if that funding is eliminated, particularly in Taos County, where 35% of the grants from the state agency are passed through entity for federal monies, go to rural communities and support the arts, whether it's Penasco, Westa, or Taos. And it would have a major impact, not only upon programming, but those organizations that do have paid staff and are just beginning to incubate and promote and educate about the arts. Those staff positions are often funded in part through federal and state monies. So, it would be significant in terms of the cultural environment that we live in, but also upon the economic impact here in Taos County.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Perhaps maybe if we do plan to have a resolution or something, whether it's support, then you could help our staff interact with some of the people, but, Commissioner, I believe.
I would be honored to do so, and it's a great segue from my last comment before I leave the Taos County Arts and Artifacts Review Committee. It's an entity that exists for you, the county, and they also would be a wonderful source of support and review of any kind of ordinance or resolution that we wish to pass to support continuation of funding for the National Endowment for the Arts. Although that committee has not met since October 22nd, 2015, I know this would be a good reason for them to gather again and assist the county commissioners in their latest representatives that we have in Washington. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Paul, thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the audience wishing to address the question? All right. Commissioners, on item 7A's, discussion consideration and decision regarding the March 7th, 2017 regular commission meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve the March 7th, 2017 regular commission meeting minutes. Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bagos.
Yes.
Chairman Farrow.
Yes.
All right. Moving now to item 8A, is discussion consideration and decision regarding the request from the eligible question for Taos County to confiscate it for the New Mexico Environment Department project. This will be presented by both Ms. Renee Martinez and Ms. Robinson will chime in at some point here. First and foremost, Ms. Martinez, I need to extend an apology to you for the confusion of this item at the last minute. You gave this to me over a week and a half ago, and I could follow one more. I'm glad we got it done, but I apologize too for dropping the ball right now.
Thank you for the consideration. I know it was a little bit last minute, so we appreciate that.
When it was last minute of life, I thought I would have got it.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of the eligible question to respectfully request Taos County to be our fiscal agent for our state appropriation project grant in the amount of $100. So, you have any questions regarding the MOU?
So, there was a, basically, a MOU, a one-page boilerplate, but Quayle had some additions to that that we've used in the past, that she said the state has accepted, and it protects Taos County. So, that was added in, and it was run by their legal staff. They made a couple additions, not corrections, additions, and it was run back through the Environment Department yesterday, I believe, and it was accepted by all parties.
Correct, thank you. Chairman, Commissioners, we have, I believe, and I have to defer to Lori Montoya on this, but I know we have at least two or three similar grants for which we're serving as a fiscal agent for Quesa. I believe, um, Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
This is for sewer lines, is that correct? I have the, okay. This one's for sewer lines. I believe there's another $50,000 grant for water system. I think there are a few other infrastructure-type grants online, and this is, I've been reviewed by the Environmental Department and in accordance with all the other agreements we've entered into, so we would support. into, so we would support the commission desires and enter into the agreement. With one consideration, we'll ask Chairman Gaias to abstain, as he'll be signing on behalf of Questa. Commissioner, please. I'm sorry, Commissioner Romero?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Quayla. And so what will be a fiscal agent for the request of what will be the responsibilities our staff will carry?
Chairman, Commissioner Romero, basically we'll kind of be intermediary as to funding from the Environment Department to the village, just assisting the village and kind of double-checking the procurement, making sure that they are following the guidelines of the grant agreement, which they've always done pretty well in the past. It is minimal on our part for those parts of you to stand between state agency and village. Your needs and assistance, your recommendation.
I recommend that you go ahead and, thank you, Quayla, and thank you, Romero. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and move that we approve the request by the village of Questa for Taos County to become a fiscal agent for a Mexico Environment Department project funding in the amount of $100,000. Okay. Second, I have a motion and a second to approve the request from the village of Questa for Taos County to become fiscal agent for the New York Environment Department project in the amount of $100,000. Also, as a note, the commissioners, the governing body and the board of Questa have worked really hard, and I feel good this year, they'll be on their own next year, we're hoping, and this is probably the last time we have to do this, but it's a good thing, we don't mind helping you at all. Third, call it.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Nice check, guys.
Chairman Fetter? Yes. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, item 9A, under contract amendment, RFP, we have discussion consideration and decision regarding approval of award of RFP 2017-02A to ccon@drugscreen.com, a non-trad service for drug testing and screening. It's to be presented by Ms. Olson de Hill, our chief prosecutor. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, good morning, Commissioner. Before you enter the packet, it's staff recommendation as well as the final evaluation committee report for RFP 2017-02A. This was our third, third time, the first two times I had to cancel the RFP due to no response, and we were fortunate enough to get actually two responses on this last try. After review, the evaluation committee would like to recommend ccon@drugscreen.com to be awarded as RFP, subject to negotiations of a mutual agreeable contract, of course. If there's any questions, I do have Ms. Weber here to explain anything in terms of the actual testing and screening if there are any questions. It's pretty much laid out within the audit that I provided in scope of work as to kind of the laws and as well as the steps, HR will be involved in the current situation.
Commissioners, there's Weber actually got called out on personnel issue. Make a motion to approve, Chairman, along with the final negotiation, that's the negotiation of Taos County. So the motion is to approve RFP 2017-02A to ccon@drugscreen.com contracted for service of drug testing and screening and allow staff to negotiate the final price.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
The motion is second.
Discussion.
Discussion, Vice Chair Gaisers.
Olson, what are the steps or do our departments have a template as to what lays out the rules of when somebody needs to be a drug user? Is that already in place?
Well, from what I understood, Ms. Weber was actually working on that within the policy that she was looking at and relooking at to model that, due to we were having issues where we needed the DOT side tested out, and we were having issues in finding someone who could actually do that. The biggest key in this is chapter hours. That was really hard to get invited by me to. We're still having, we'll probably have to work that out here with this company, but from what I understood, there's going to be randomization done by this company, they're going to be provided a list of employees, and they are going to be, they have a system set up to do the randomization that Ms. Weber wants to do quarterly. If there's suspicion, obviously, you know, you would contact a firm, they have a protocol for that, but new hires definitely, but I don't know too much in terms of in detail as to how it's set up for department and in terms of policy meetings quarterly.
Chairman, Commissioner Gaisers, we do have policy currently that kind of lays out the guidelines that we improve, you know, new personnel policy, depending on flaws and issues and current policy that we improve. So and bring forward new personnel policies and rules, it'll have an improved process. I think it's pretty well modeled in that process.
And the union, the word?
Yes, well, as what's currently in there, it's been signed off by the new administrative work rules that everybody had a chance to see have not been implemented yet, and so we'll find a communication, stricter rules will be replaced, but it hasn't been implemented yet, the union hasn't been there.
Anything else, Commissioners? Do you have a motion and a second that stated earlier, there is no further discussion for call?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Nice check, guys.
Yes.
Chairman Fetter?
Yes. Thank you also.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 10, resolutions and ordinances. First is a discussion consideration and decision regarding the approval of Resolution 2017-18, the resolution appointing members to the Taos County Lodgers Tax Advisory Board is to be presented by our deputy clerk, Ms. Valerie Maitland.
Good morning, Commissioners, Councilor, Attorney. So I'm here before you to request that you approve the Lodger Tax Board for this upcoming year. It is the same members as last year, I almost know you have indicated that it's okay to keep those. If there are any changes, you can let me know if anybody else in mind, but we have John Paul Bradley, Signee Nichols, Alvino Martinez, Deborah Sandoval, and Jeanette Wright.
Commissioners, your fingers for recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, you're all running, trying to continue service?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I will, so a motion to approve?
Yeah, I have a motion to approve Resolution 2017-18, the resolution appointing members to the Taos County Lodger Tax Advisory Board. Second?
And I have a second.
Especially?
First of all, yeah. Mr. Chairman, real quick, if we could, I'd send on a letter, that would be appreciated.
Thank you.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Nice check, guys.
Yes.
Chairman Fetter?
Yes. Moving on, I have a big discussion, decision regarding approval of Resolution 2017-19, which is the resolution appointing members to the Taos County Valuation Protest Board is to be presented by Mr. Randy Baca, our deputy county assessor, and also in the audience, I will recognize our county assessor, Mr. Adrian.
Good morning, Commissioner, Attorney. Our Lodger Tax Board is considered to be members every two years, or appointed by either commission. The only thing that I would ask for amendment on the resolution itself is that if the Mexico taxation Department appointees be removed as those appointees are appointed by either as done by the property tax, it would interrupt it. So that would into your resolution.
Quayla, are you okay with us changing the resolution now?
I don't have that current resolution on my screen, can somebody? For now, I don't have this resolution.
Item three, right there, one member and one alternate shall be, but I already gave the loss, there's an actual game.
It's right there, it's right there on the screen.
Number three.
And those will be appointed by the commission instead, correct?
No, that would be appointed by the Director of Property Tax, the commission has no authority to appoint them.
Okay, and if remaining, I recall the statute said that the commission elects three, so I'll need to double-check on that.
It actually states it above the actual statute where the board consists of three voting members.
Correct.
But the only two that are appointed by the commission are the two members itself and the chairman of the board, voted by the Director of Property Tax, as an exception there.
Because I did read the statute, and I didn't see anything about appointment by taxation removed in that statute, so I.
It says in the number three, one member, one alternate shall be for the property principal, obviously appointed by the taxation of the board, assigned by the director. They are assigned by the director, the statute, the director is the director of property.
Correct, let's just revisit this.
Do you have a tie frame on this, Randy?
Yeah, I've done before, we have fire protest, very much fire protest holders.
Is there something that we can move to a later point in this meeting?
I believe so.
At this time, Commissioner, I would like to make a motion to move item 10B to item 14A prior to the possible executive session item.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, okay, I have a motion and a second to move item 10B to become item 14A prior to the possible executive session. Third, call it.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Nice check, guys.
Yes.
Chairman Fetter?
Yes. Okay. Do you need to go to your office, because it's perfectly, you do what you need to do?
I'm just gonna finish some and Google briefly.
You may now for doing, huh?
Yeah. Maybe our smart one will work out.
At this time, I will read the items that are listed on our consent agenda, if any commissioner has any item that they wish to discuss or to pull off, it must be handled prior to the next item, as last stated, I will make a motion to move to a later time. Item A is discussion consideration and decision regarding approval of DFA Resolution Number 25, 2016, 17 fiscal year, resolution requesting to adjust the 2017 fiscal year final budget to increase revenues and expenditures in the general fund. Item B is discussion consideration decision regarding approval of DFA Resolution Number 26 of the 2016, 17 fiscal year resolution, requesting to adjust the 2017 fiscal year budget to transfer permanent cash from the general fund to the capital enhancement fund for projects identified in DFA Form S5. Item C is discussion consideration and decision regarding the approval of the budget adjustment for the Office of Emergency Management, 0101-1810. Discussion consideration and decision regarding the approval of budget adjustment for Human Resources Department, 0101-1010. E is discussion consideration and decision regarding board approval of budget adjustment for the Bureau of Elections, 0101-0610. Item F, discussion consideration and decision regarding approval of budget adjustment for foster grandparent program, 2219-0117. Discussion, G is discussion consideration and decision regarding approval of budget adjustment for senior companion program, 2219-0118. H is discussion consideration and decision regarding approval of budget, E911, 0207-0901. I is discussion consideration and decision regarding approval to increase the total budget for food expense additional funding awarded for NSIP. Item J is discussion consideration and decision regarding grant agreement for appropriation 16-82520 to plan, designing, constructing, equipped, and furnished the Old County Courthouse. Item K is discussion consideration decision regarding approval of grant agreement for appropriation 16-82517 to plan, designing, constructing community center in Amalia. And finally, item L is discussion consideration and decision regarding approval of purchase of a JD John Deere 5085E four-wheel drag tractor with Samurai 18-inch boom and that 48-inch two-blade buzz bar. Commissioners, if this matters, any item that you wish to pull from consent agenda, not as you're motion to.
So move, Mr. Chairman, only recommendation that I would make is that next time we have dollar amounts in these, so that the commission as well as the public knows just how much money is being allocated for these items.
Okay. I have a motion. Yeah, I will second, along with your suggestion. Okay. So we will include dollar amounts for appropriations, budget adjustment, dollar amounts, maybe a little difficult to summarize, but they are included in our packet, but for projects, I think we will be able to list, I'll be able to, I'll see when we figure out a way when she presents, which is include the dollar amount, the budget adjustment for different funds moving around in the building, our list in our packet, and that would change the ultimate budget numbers, building a budget in the budget. If that's acceptable, Commissioners?
First.
All right. Put a call roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Nice check, guys.
Yes.
Chairman Fetter?
Yes. Moving on to item 12, county manager's report on matters update to the county commission on various items that involve Taos County. Mr. Porter is passing out some stuff, I'll think, I'll start with all of the bars and agreement appropriation of projects we've got going, and also Rahon and Madam Lori, you guys have been very busy, thank you guys.
Chairman, I'll echo that, thank you, finance staff, Rahon, we appreciate the consent agendas, but we don't get to see you guys up here today, so. And on that note, I'll just go ahead and touch up, and request Commissioner Romero, the grant agreement for the Old County Courthouse is a $150,000 grant agreement, and on my day, the grant agreement was a $20,000 grant agreement. Moving on to a manager's report, I have a few items on it today. First, I wanted to start with discussion about a meeting that was had last week with our group of veterans and the Taos Pueblo Governor. We have a strong group of veterans that have been pushing the veteran cemetery project for years and years, and they have had the idea to collaborate more with our Puecos within the Taos County, so House Pueblo and Police Pueblo have both been asked to participate and be kind of members in the planning and moving forward of our veteran cemetery. There's a lot of reasons for this, of course, being good neighbors and having our neighbors as part of this, so that they can also take advantage of this veteran cemetery within our community, but there's also an indication from the Secretary of Department of Veteran Affairs that if we do include the Puecos, we may have the ability to fast-track the designation for a national cemetery, so we do want to continue to work with them. What was the request of the Governor of Taos Pueblo was that we do a joint resolution from the commission with each Pueblo, and typically that would come to you guys first, and so I'm talking about it today because we're going to do it a little backwards, we're putting together a vanilla-type joint resolution, just committing to working together, and then we're going to ask the Puecos each to review it and see if they could before the tribal council, before it comes back to you, in order to kind of expedite the process. We take it to the tribal councils after your approval, they may have changes, and it goes back to you. So we're trying to expedite the process, but that's kind of the direction we're in, is working to sort of apply that communal approach, so that we can hopefully get that full designation for national cemetery here in Taos County.
Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing that I would not like to see is a transfer of our property to anyone else, and I understand, I believe that that might be one of the items that they are going to suggest to the county commission. I would hate for us to lose our, it raises the question of how permanent some relationship like that can be, especially with the clothes, operating the federal government. It would have to be a very strong document that would be agreeable by everybody to make sure that it does exist as the final resting place for our veterans.
As the purpose is we intend to involve.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I understood, and I appreciate you mentioning that. There have been some discussion about the idea of a transfer at some point in order to specify that designation. In the meantime, because of all the capital appropriations that the state has given the county, the county must maintain their ownership in order to be able to spend that money and not have that type of issue issues. So we will have to maintain ownership for quite a few more years to be able to continue to spend the money that we're getting from the legislature. Uh, and I appreciate your comments. Hopefully make sure that that is part of the discussion going forward. That, um, we don't hesitate about handing over full property ownership without understanding that we have access to it for the information or practices. So there's one other question about the veteran cemetery. Uh, I'm gonna talk quickly about secure rules, schools funding, um, from the federal level. It is a title-free secure rule funding and something that the county has been able to count on for many, many years. Uh, we receive about five hundred and fifty thousand a year in this type of funding. This year, that funding was not included in the federal budget. Uh, it converts back to a nineteen oh eight statute that really cuts the amount down significantly. Uh, even though that nineteen oh eight statute had percentage increases, the baseline is so small that we're looking at fifty-five thousand dollars instead of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I wanted to let the commission know that because it is gonna be a substantial hit mostly to our public works, um, who gave the, the bulk of this money for their operations. We do budget about two hundred and twenty thousand of this into public works. Um, the money we did receive will go into entirely to their budget, but that leaves us quite short. The other program in effect significantly is Title III, which we use for our movie coordinator. We do, um, we use a lot of that money as matching funds for thinning projects. And, um, we have had some overtime in there for search and rescue and for after-hours thinning projects and things of that sort. So it will be a tremendous, um, impact on our budget over the long term. This did happen a couple of years ago. However, the last minute, the federal government budgeted the money into, um, I think was the Farm Bill at that time. So we weren't able to receive full funding really close to the end of our fiscal year. We're hopeful that that might happen again, but I'm not as, I'm not as hopeful as the last time, I guess, best way to put it. I don't think that, um, the Farm Bill will pack this money in any degree, there's the Farm Bill at all. So there's been so many discussions at the federal level, so many changes to the federal budget, uh, that I just wanted to let the commission know that this has affected us. And I am not completely hopeful that we're gonna receive full funding this year. And I do have some concerns about tilt and the whole as well, that's hasn't been addressed yet. So I'm not gonna scare the rest of you yet, but there are definitely concerns in our federal budget and how the impact particularly has to recover.
And yet, uh, I, I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, they're estimated that it's gonna cost a hundred and fifty-three million or a hundred and forty-three million to, uh, keep, uh, safeguarding our president's wife and his son at their, their Trump, Trump palace in New York for the rest of, for a year. That's a year's cost.
Cause they refuse to go where they're, well, it's unfortunate. It's sad to hear that this country has had to deal with broken bridges and highway systems, yet we can afford to do what we do.
It is a tough time and it certainly, uh, uh, we have to pay attention. We all have to be very interested in this federal budget, but they will trickle down to us in the next year, the two years into the future. We'll be feeling the cuts if they do materialize. So I just wanted to share that with the commission. You guys are heads up that we are probably gonna have to come in the future with some more budget adjustments to make up for what we do know we're losing in this time of secure schools funding. Um, next, I'm gonna go ahead and do a quick historic county courthouse update. I'm gonna ask Richard Sanchez to come up and give you guys a quick update. But we have hoped to have Hanlon and Woods come to our April fourth meeting for a presentation. Mr. Woods really wants to, he's part of that presentation and will not be available till April eighteenth meeting. So at this time, I'm gonna let the commission know April eighteenth will do a presentation from the architects about the work they've done so far in historic county courthouse and the information they've compiled from their questionnaires and from the public. So, Mr. Sanchez, if you want to, um, the dog raised it.
Chairman, um, hold the last queue with it. Uh, I remember what's been here every week, periodically, um, assessing the building and documenting dimensions, finishes, uh, everything is required as a complete project. Uh, the other thing that they've done, they have invested as subcontractors, so they did engineering and, uh, we were administering to do azimuths of utilities, elevations, all part documentation, knowing exactly where the courthouse sits on our property, where it sits at the plaza in relation to all the boundaries on the plaza. Uh, they compiled those, uh, surveys that, uh, the five of you filled out and had, uh, correlated everything up to the team to cook them as the commission ranked it. Uh, now we presented to you in that meeting. They've also developed, right now, they have four different, um, layouts more, more, more based on, and it's gonna be really based on, um, how the commission visions the use of the building, which, which I don't mind to pick out. But they're very viable, uh, floor plans. I've seen them, uh, addressed different needs in different lots and programs in the way, but it's all kind of based on, so they've done a lot. We'll have the three-D models for each storefront plus the actual floor plan. And, uh, it's, it's moving a lot, a lot forward as well.
Thank you, Commissioners. So next topic, I wanted to, um, touch on what I handed out to you folks was, uh, schedule of the Association of Counties spring legislative district meetings. Uh, this is something that NMEC does every year after the legislative session. Uh, they do try and schedule a meeting within each district to go over the legislative, um, priorities and how they shook out over the session. Uh, it is unfortunate that the meeting for our district is scheduled on our regular board meeting date, which is Tuesday, April eighteen. Uh, so there are other locations that the board will be able to attend if possible. Uh, looks like the next closest would be Thursday, April twentieth at San Juan County Administration Building in Verne Leo. Uh, but if you do want to attend, please, um, get with the mail and show RSVP through on your key card. And then, uh, the last thing we'll talk about today, and I'll have any to come up, but give you guys a brief present, uh, update on our NMEC summer conference. I mean, it's been going into it and, um, I want to thank her for really stepping it up. This is probably just the beginning of how busy she's been in three months, but non-stop busy. And we're really getting on our plans.
Morning, Commissioner. Um, so far, we've gotten, um, close to finding whether we're gonna have our night on Wednesday. Uh, we have, um, one hope that we're still waiting for, two other ones. Um, the problem we're having is that our group is so big that Taus really doesn't have, uh, a big, huge location for as many as are expected. Um, we're up to, in other ways, that people have said up to seven hundred could be coming, um, whereas Hobbs has five hundred. So we're trying to, um, get creative on how we do it. Uh, there's been some talk about how we need different parks. We looked into that too, uh, to bring the cost down. But it's just the amount of people that we have to feed and, um, address where they sit. We have to rent everything because we do not have a location.
By the rain.
Uh, rain, to come to the tent, and then to get a big enough tent to accommodate that many people has been our, our major, um, challenge. So. But other than that, um, everything else seems to be following in place. We have meetings coming up April fifth, uh, with NMEC coming down. And we're having our individual, um, groups with different activities, meeting with, um, joint committees.
The idea of using the plaza is, is gone?
Using the plaza, we have to totally, but the problem is that we have to, um, secure it just for NMEC. We cannot have other individuals coming in like tourists. So we would have to close down the plaza, which means closing down for tourists during the summer for the shops. It's, it would be totally.
Pretty much a full day.
It's a full day to set up what we need. It would be like business. I wonder if.
It would hurt.
Yeah. And then it's cause, um, they do have, the next day, they do have Taus Plaza live, so we can't, you know, they're gonna be busy doing their stuff with them.
Nothing at Tauski Valley?
Well, after talking to, um, the tourism group that's kind of helping, the marketing tourism group, um, he didn't think he could accommodate us. Whereas, um, talking to one of the, um, council, um, Ski Valley, she's looking in to see what we can maybe provide going on Tuesday with the people that come in early, um, to have something up there for them.
The problem with that, Commissioner, also is we're responsible for transportation.
Yes.
They're out there and that.
Yeah. And, and the sagebrush is, is too.
They're using that the next night, so they're setting up for there. But then.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I'll be back. Um, Ski Valley and River to come up with ideas for events that might hook in the conference either the beginning of the week or the end of the week to try and maybe keep people here an extra night or two and, you know, offer the discounts or accommodations for a discounted rate of that be possible. So I think we're gonna look on doing something on Tuesday, Friday night that keeps people here longer as well.
The site that hasn't responded is the Country Club. They've agreed to close down part of their operation for three days. I've set up doing the event, head out.
They've also working with our number, like, or per person, write down a plot for us to see if they can. Um, they're going off of, they have, they have events like the weddings and.
We have.
The police did have theirs that are also, um, so.
If anybody has any suggestions, I don't know if we even thought about Kim Carson Park, I don't know what the Taus theme of the, who's on the rain, but unfortunately, they have reasons to breathe there that night. Plus Little Lake, there's no way to close the park down to still accommodate them. We looked at that, that Rocka Park, they offered that up to us, but we all get eaten alive by mosquitoes. Commissioner, guys, we walk, mosquito bites all over.
And then our park, um, Mrs. Park, um, is not at all. So, I mean, we have something there right about. Plus, there's not, um, soft holding. We'd have to probably deep down a bit.
And that would also disrupt soft holding for three days.
Yeah.
So.
We can, every site, not having civic centers is really getting us harder. And they keep adding people to us.
Well, I, I think the thought is, you know, we got lower numbers in Hobbs because.
It was Hobbs.
Because it's almost.
It's not me, it's your car.
They don't, they don't look here.
Well, you know, and there's a lot of people that are wanting to come to Taus because of itself.
A lot. And we did find out, um, from, um, Mr. Rallis that hopefully not come out of the hotel too. So, you know, we're getting close on the hotel numbers too. So we're gonna be really booked that's, that week.
And on that note, we are trying to get the word out. Uh, we've worked on writing some request letters to solicit donations from different businesses around the town. There are vendors that work in the county. That would really help extend the budget, so to speak, throughout our set budget now. And any contributions we get will just make this a bigger, how much we can. Um, the budget that was set aside was thirty-five thousand dollars as a proposal required when we proposed for this conference. So we are gonna put that aside to be able to, um, basically cover the, the place that we decide on. So if it is the Country Club, we need to get those arrangements made here. We, we do hope that our contributions will come in and help us take up that cost that I have to use our resources for.
How much, um, how many people does the Country Club fit?
We're up to six fifty in the quote. Um, we meet with the make-up to see how it's going. But from what we understand, from the last time we had it, they only, um, thought five hundred were coming and we went up to seventy. So we figured now, same kind of deal.
Does this include spouses, children?
This is just including, yeah. Well, not for our, but it could just have any people.
And Commissioner, we even look at using our property here, but that's being used earlier in the day for the.
The rugby.
The rugby, so.
So we're moving along. It has been a bigger challenge at the civic center. We don't have that big space in Sagebrushes. The host counties or, or NMEC will have there and there on Thursday night. So we try to have to keep the K events in Sagebrushes. So we're really hopeful the Country Club will be able to.
That's the only chance at this point?
Well, Kate, Kate Towns, they're trying to figure out things that are, and our Michael's, so Roswell's also, we looked into there too. They, it's just not fit. It's not big enough to hold a tent. They don't have enough inside, even if they do inside and out, we're still past the other. So.
So the weather is also big, too.
Yes.
Can you, can you, uh, weather?
Just to be safe, but we're trying to be safe. And that means they can't just, you know, keep it moving to another spot. We have to secure spots.
And the transportation is always a big point, too. You guys are cycling people in and out of there safely and taking opportunity for them to come through, to reach you.
Right, Chairman, I think, you know, I think it'd be nice and, and work out, but I think to close the range, Chris. You have things to think about. No, I didn't think.
Oh, there's nothing inside the tent. You're right, Commissioner.
So, yeah, we should be discouraged. It's good work all the way around. Try to figure it out.
Yep. The big club is gonna work.
Well, yeah, that's been great to work.
What's, what's the hurdles and, where should we begin to show?
We're in size of the world, um, accommodation.
We're gonna have to give them a solid amount, I mean, a solid number, um, soon, because they, we are renting everything from, cut out for, you know, chairs and everything. But they, they're really down on, I think, lumber and the, the, all that is really the moment to keep down.
What is that amount? Do we know that?
Per person?
So far.
I'm waiting on two other quotes, so I can't really.
Still negotiating.
Waiting on two other places, so I can't really say, you know.
So we're two months away?
Three, two and a half now, two and a half months. It's getting close. It's, it's exciting. We're certainly a victim of our own duty and, and hospitality. People are excited to go to Taus, so don't make it work. We continue to ask for help and, uh, volunteers and assistance. And so we'll continue to ask for that all the way till the end. If you guys know anyone that can help us, uh, the Zojajquest, of course, if you guys can offer a person or two, we'll take them. Um, we've asked River, Ski Valley, the same thing, and the town.
And we've also offered them to be, you know, tr- tourism, um, areas like, so they show up there, the circle, and just circle, see, we're trying to get the tourism, we're attacked to keep up.
Any other questions? NMEC conference? I'm worried.
Don't worry.
We're on track. It is a challenge, but we're on track. And it's just, the biggest challenge is that so many people do want to come in and our numbers are always so much higher than most other places that, you know, we have to accommodate, uh, kind of have some flexibility between that set and eight hundred here and, you know, the total number till the end. And as you mentioned, spouses and children. I don't think there's many people took their spouse to Hobbs as they would agree with the Taus.
Right. Because a lot of them are, this, this is what I've heard, is they're extending the common ground strip to include.
We're talking about that, so.
And in our packets that we're giving out, we're gonna try to include March, the sightseeing, so, and there's.
We'll do it here in the, it's very cool.
It's not a bad idea. We use the, the courthouse.
It's centered on there, it's out there, it's a, for the.
We have to, yeah.
It's one of those.
The location is, um, because of the river.
Oh, I see.
And that, you know, is.
Well, they don't have.
No, they all have to, but it's, uh, it's one of the.
Seven hundred, so move to me to grow.
No, no.
Your job's simple.
Yeah, we can accommodate every one.
Randy said he wouldn't come, so.
So that's, uh, what we have on that. And one last announcement to make, um, the. So that's the, what we have on that. One last announcement to make, um, we did, management did make a decision on our N I S grant here. We will be hiring Herb and Nina, who are currently on our staff, to take the position as a N I S grant. I just wanted the commission to know that. The commission started history means the same position. We're going to hire out his open position as soon as possible. And, um, I just wanted to ask everyone to help support him. We do know that there's a few things that management needs to do to make him succeed, so we're working on that as well to give him the support that he needs to be successful.
And you had a committee that did the interview, the process.
Yes.
From outside people.
He did go through the whole entire process. He did get interviewed. We had, um, a couple of technical experts on that committee and a couple of internals as well, and we all felt that he was capable of doing the job well for the town companies. That's all I have at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be on the item thirteen A, uh, any business you would like considered a future meeting as commissioners. If so, if you don't have any left now, feel free to email Renell and she will get it on the, uh, April fourth meeting. Thanks, guys. Oh, Sheriff, before you leave. Okay, um, commissioners' announcements. Anything, commissioners? Mr. Vegas?
Four.
Zero. Okay. Um, I was going to issue an editorial with Sheriff's death, so it's not going to be. So, um, we had an item earlier that was postponed to a specific time, that being prior to item fourteen A. That is item ten B. Um, I'll just give a few later, Sheriff, from what I wanted to discuss over there and then we'll talk to you after. Um, this is a discussion consideration and decision regarding a Q and A Resolution twenty seventeen dash nineteen, a resolution appointing members to the Tausk County District Justice Board. Mr. Bakwa, our W O E County Assessor, is back again.
Go morning, Commissioner, again. Um, this resolution with the amendment, um, under section eight, under the Mexico taxation of data part next, that we could remove D A, Gracie Wilkins and Philip Sena and would replace me with the order to remember invoking it to be determined by, uh, either after or property tax.
Okay, you heard the amendment. Quayle, everything's cool to say it?
Uh, Chairman, Commissioner, yeah, thank you for the, all of the time we needed to geek out, I guess.
All right, all right, wait. Appreciate your, uh, your work there.
Motion approved. I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
An a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty seventeen dash nineteen, resolution appointing members of the Tausk County District Justice Board. Third color roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagels.
Yes.
Chairman Thambr.
Yes. Item fourteen A is a discussion regarding an ACOM litigation. These might may be discussed in executive session under open meetings exception ten fifteen one each seven. At this time, Quayle, is if you're ready for the nation that we do this in open meeting or would you wish us to go into executive session as allowed?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I recommend that we go into executive session.
Pleasure, Commissioner. Motion to go into executive session on fourteen.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, third color roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagels.
Yes.
Chairman Thambr.
Yes, uh, Quayle, about how long to a short?
Seven minutes.
Six and a half minutes, let's face it. Please go ahead. Motion to come back into regular session, commissioners.
So, Mr. Chairman.
An a motion and a second to come back into, um, come out of a closed session and go open session. Third color roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. I'm sorry, Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagels.
Yes.
Chairman Thambr.
Yes. Um, Quayle, at this time, would you give a report of what was discussed? Did we stay on topic or were any decisions made during the closed session?
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. The mission did mean first, I wanted to, um, open meeting act, opening meetings act exemption ten dash fifteen dash one each seven, a line for discussion of pending litigation. Uh, we did only make regards to the ACOM litigation. No other matters were discussed and no decisions were made at that time.
Commissioners, at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept Quayle's report of the open meetings act exemption.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Motion that a second to, uh, okay. Hold it.
Right, there's not going to be a decision. Yes, it's a decision.
It's usually been said discussion and then go to a decision, decision, discussion and decision.
Okay, hold on, the procedural, we're going to accept Quayle's report first is, is what we discussed in the one to this topic. So, third color roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagels.
Yes.
Chairman Thambr.
Yes, okay, now, we do not have. The item was listed as a discussion.
I don't think that that handles strings, you, Chairman, or Commissioners. Um, no discussion, no decision being made in executive session, executive session anyway, because a decision must be made in an open meeting. So the commission needs, wishes to make a decision on what was discussed, is appropriate to do so now in, in the open meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, uh, authorize staff to accept the settlement agreement and mutual release as has been, uh, noted on the, uh, agenda for today's meeting, um, regarding the ACOM litigation. Okay, there is a motion to accept the settlement agreement with ACOM litigation as was discussed in the executive session as part of our agenda.
I'm second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second. A little bit of discussion at first, the way we. What I'm looking is on item fourteen, I have to see the word. Decision. Even where the agenda is.
Correct.
Can the commission give direction to, to execute?
The commission could give authority to the chairman to sign the settlement agreement as proposed. I don't think that, um, decision taken after an executive session, that not being listed here, I don't believe it's a problem because executive session was noticed, but.
Okay, we did have a previous motion and second, Mr. Robinson, do you believe that Commissioner Blankenhorn's motion is still viable?
Chairman Commissioners, um, it may be desirable to clarify, um, the commission wishes to give the authority, um, to you, Mr. Chair, to sign the settlement agreement.
Here's the easiest way. Let's go down the current motion and second is my recommendation, and then we start from scratch.
Third color roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
No.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Okay, I don't want to get too close.
Vice Chair Gagels.
No. We have a question. Okay, Commissioner Blankenhorn, you wish to make a motion?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, I'll make a motion to authorize, uh, the chairman to execute settlement agreement and mutual release with ACOM under that litigation.
Okay, we have a motion authorizing the chairman to sign and execute the agreement, settling the ACOM litigation issue as was discussed in the executive session allowed in this agenda. Where are you second?
Check. Third color roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagels.
Yes.
Chairman Thambr.
Yes. All right. So if you can do this one without seven motions, probably on item fifteen. Are we doing what's good?
Thanks, Doc.
It's kind of early, I don't have anything else to do this morning.
How many go in the mall then before they close the drive-in?
Good plan. I'll make a motion to the chair.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
What's this, have you read the draft?
Uh, third color roll. All right, I'll say ah.
Yes.
Thank you, Mallory, and you all over here, if you guys want to.